Hello, everybody. Welcome to Curry and Mitchell from Watts to Brooklyn and dare I say, from all points in between and beyond. I'm Sheldon Curry here along with my longtime good friend James Mitchell. We're going to discuss a number of topics in the sports world, politics and anything else we deem relevant that we think you should hear. So, thanks for joining us. What's up, good brother?
Everything's good, everything's good, a little chilly here on the east coast, but other than that, it's beautiful day.
Sounds good, sounds good, man. So, as usual, there are plenty of things we can talk about. There's the NFL, week six just concluded. The Major League Baseball playoffs are getting ready to enter the league championship series. NBA season starts tonight and this is, yeah, October 18th as we're recording this. And then any number of things, so anywhere you want to start or you want me to throw something out at you?
Well, we might go start with the NFL, I guess, I said at the top of everybody's list right now, I imagine.
Sounds good, sounds good. Any first observation?
Well, the, there's a lot of good games this weekend, I really enjoyed the Eagles Cowboys game. Even though it was kind of problematic for me, I was really, well, I have, I had a real problem with them being, so. I basically kind of root for the Cowboys. You know, historically, I used to win the old Cowboys anyway, the Barbados and all those guys. Fell off the wagon a bit. And now I'm a big Jalen Hurts fan, so I'm really, you know, I was glad that Prescott didn't play because it made it easy for me, you know? So, I was able to pull for the Eagles all the way. But it was a good game, but I was a little disappointed with the way they played, especially in the second half. They, and they seem to have this problem, the Eagles, so far this year, they jump out the big leagues and then they fall off in the second half. And I saw an article today where it said that the Eagles are outscoring their opponents in the second quarter, 112 to 27.
Wow.
But then in the second half, they're being outscored 57 to 35. That's tremendous drop off. And I also saw an article today where the coach was saying he took, he's taking the blame for the most of that. He said, because he has a tendency to take his foot off the gas once they get the lead. And that's something that could be a problem now, you know, maybe get a little further along in the season and play some of the better teams. Something to watch and see what happens, but I'm really excited for Jalen Hurts, a big fan of his and I'm glad to see where they're going so far. They look very impressive the other night. And Dallas' behavior, their defense was tremendous. With Dak coming back, they should be in good shape also.
Yeah, yeah, I think my thing with Philly is you wonder why he's taking his foot off the gas. That's kind of problematic if your team is playing well, they've loaded that roster, you know, they added A.J. Brown on the outside. They have an excellent offensive line, excellent defense. You just wonder why would you take your foot off the gas and so you wonder what that's about. And so I'm glad to hear that he's, has spoken to that and I guess they're going to make some changes and they're getting ready to go into bye week. So, I mean, when you can go into bye week six and oh. But I think one of the observations I made in that game is that when Lane Johnson, I guess he's a right tackle went out and I know he's a three or four time Pro Bowler. It really hurt them a little bit. And so, you know, hopefully he's not out, for Eagle fans, hopefully he's not out for a while. And if he, if he ends up being out for a while or gets hurt later in the season, they're going to need to find somebody to be able to fill in. Because they're clearly a run centric team. And so usually with run centric teams have pretty good offensive lines and so, you know, they're tethered to, you know, in a positive way. And so, like you, I'm very impressed with them, I'm very impressed with, with Jalen Hurts. But I will say, Nick Sirianni, I have a bone to pick. When they scored that touchdown to go up nine, I don't know, in about seven, eight minutes to go, whatever it was in the fourth quarter. For him to go for two was just crazy, I mean, it made no sense. You know, if you kick the extra point, you're up 10, you make sure that if Dallas scores a touchdown, extra point, a field goal, you don't lose the game. When they missed that two point conversion, man, they ran that risk. And I, it just, it just doesn't make sense, even if you get to two, you're up 11, the other team can still tie you. I didn't, I just didn't, I know why he did it because there was a penalty and it moved the ball from the two to the one if you're going to go for two. But that was one of the dumbest decisions and luckily for him, it didn't, it didn't cost him.
No, but what he did, like you said, he opened the door for the possibility. And that was, that was a big mistake, I think. And then the, the second mistake he made, every time in the game where they had a fourth and one, a situation like that. They went to what I call their rugby scrum kind of formation to get the one yard. But then in that instance, when he went for the two point conversion, he had the same situation, but he decided to go from a shotgun. And that didn't make sense to me, so it was a poor play. The call on top of it, I think the questionable decision, I agree with it all automatically.
Yeah, and I think luckily for him and Philadelphia faithful, they got away with it.
Yeah, the guy missed a field goal, so they didn't have to face that possibility.
You could just see that, the way, the way that was going for a minute, Dallas might pull that out.
Right, right.
Let's go to Baltimore and the Giants.
Oh, man, that was, that was a frustrating game for me. Baltimore has been frustrating to watch all year, their lack of offense, it's just, I don't know what's going on there. I really don't understand it. They, they controlled the ball the entire first half. It only had like, what, about 10 points or something like that, I think it was. And they just started scoring and it's too much emphasis on Lamar to do everything he can. They don't, haven't got any running game going. And they, they put too much pressure on the defense, I think. And that's going to come back to haunt them. It was haunting them already, but they're three and three, so, and they could easily be six and oh. And there's some decisions they made, some play calls, and Lamar made a couple of really poor passes that really hurt them. And caused them the opportunity to possibly win that game with higher, whatever, at the end of the game. So, he has to take some of the blame for some of the decisions he's making. But their team as a whole, their offense has to get clicking and they really have to get their run game going.
Yeah, the, a couple of things, one of the things, and you know, and I guess as the season progresses, you know, you get, you start finding out who's good, who's not. And then certain, certain perceptions change as the season goes. A couple of things, first of all, let me, let me address Lamar. I think outside of a couple of bad passes, and right, like you said, he has to take responsibility for, he's played excellent through the year.
Oh, yes, okay.
He just cannot make that pass he made in the fourth quarter against the Giants, they're up three. I know he was trying to make something out of nothing after it was a bad snap. But you gotta throw the ball away, punt, your team is up three and live to play another day. But that, but that notwithstanding, man, a couple of things, I, you know, I absolutely agree with you about he needing help. Kenyon Drake had a big game Sunday, ran for, I think, 119 yards, but that is, that's been atypical. That's been more of an aberration this year, outside of Lamar, nobody's gaining any yards on the ground. And of course, they don't have a lot of speed on, at the wide receiver. So, the thing that I wanted to say, and I don't disagree with you about their offense sometimes stumbling. They're averaging 26 points a game and actually that, that puts them in the top, I think, eight or nine of the league. And then when you consider the fact that you could argue every team they've played has a pretty good defense this year. Which makes it, what he's doing even better. So, it just shows you how well he's playing, but he's just, he can't, he's just gotta sometime dial it back because he can't do everything. And I know that's what he's trying to do. I heard something today that they're, they're, they're talking to Deshaun Jackson. I know he's about, what, about 35, but you know, the last time I saw him last year, early in the season, the Rams, he can still get behind the defense, so.
That's true, I'm just gonna say that.
So, if anything, he could, he could, he could, he could spread the field for you, so we'll see what happens with that. But I heard that right before we came on the air. What about Buffalo K.C.?
Another exciting game, it was a toss up all the way. Poor decision by Mahomes when he threw the interception. There's some bad calls by referees or non-calls that hurt them. Penalties, you know, the dead ball penalties ate them alive, you know, at bad moments. It was just one of those games that could go either way, the one that whip a blink first was going to lose. And the Kansas City blink, it looks like this time. But, and they had a, you know, a couple of defensive guys out, you know, to their credit, but it was a game that they couldn't have, and I think should have won. When, when that's the way it goes sometimes, that's why they play the game, just see what happens, you know?
Yeah.
Calls by the officials just hurt them terribly.
Yeah, and I think these officiating sometimes just leaves a lot to be desired. And for me, I think the thing that bothers me with officiating is, I can deal with you not calling the incidental fouls. The things where, you know, it's like, ah, 50 50. But it's when they miss the obvious that bothers me and I think that happens too often. And so, and then when you juxtapose calling a 50 50 penalty and missing the 100% obvious penalty. Then it creates an unevenness that is hard for certain teams to overcome. So, I'm going to step away a little bit from that. What do you, what do you think about Tom Brady missing walk through in the meeting to attend Robert Kraft's, his former owner's wedding party?
I think many, anybody else that, that, we still be hearing about it now, you know? Because it's Tom Brady, you know? I heard Keyshawn Pooh pulling it this morning, said, ah, it's not a big deal, you know, the guys miss walk throughs all the time. And, you know, and I don't, I think it's a big deal, you know, and then to come back and not play well, if he's not playing well. And didn't try to blame it all on his offensive mind and try to show them up on the sideline screaming at them, you know, between, between possession with the wall. Is this a bad look and I think anybody else would be getting wrecked over the coals if they did something like that, you know? Imagine if Russell Wilson or whoever, you know, anybody else did that, you'd be hearing a lot more about it, but how terrible it was. But because it's Brady, people kind of overlook it and go to his personal life and all that kind of crap, you know? And I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a bad look, it's a bad example of that, it's a so-called leader of a team. That you don't deem it necessary to go to walk throughs close to a game and stuff like that. But, you know, what can I say, it's Tom Brady being Tom Brady, I guess, get away, what he can get away with.
Yeah, you, you wonder if, if it's going to lead to losing the team or the locker room. Because you made a good point about, you know, he does this. And then the, the day that they, they have some adversity in that loss to Pittsburgh, Sunday 2018. He's shown verbally screaming and cussing at his offensive line. And it's a bad look, man, it's a bad look, you know, when you, you weren't there on Saturday, you didn't fly back with the team. And now you're out there, you're separating yourself, and I think he knows that he stepped in it a little bit. Because I, I think he had a post in the last day or two where he kind of talks about, we're going to turn this around, we're going to do it together. And I think one of his posts had two of his offensive linemen on there saying, we're going to lead the way, or something to that effect. So, I think he realizes he stepped in it. And it's, 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 you know, the optics are not good. And then on top of the fact that he missed those 11 days during middle or late part of the training camp. I know it was at least a week or two before the season started when he came back. And then they, they're giving him every Wednesday off, and I know there are other players that get those types of, I don't know, accommodations, if you will. But I just think a person who's, who's been perceived and even him, from himself to be so obsessed with, with working hard and winning. For him to do that. And then we look at the juxtaposition, Bill Belichick didn't go to Robert Kraft's wedding party. He got his team ready then, they went and spanked Cleveland 38 to 15, so. Yeah, and I don't want to, I'm not going to pound on Brady, but I just, but you hit it, the hypocritical nature of all this stuff just, you know, because you're right. If this had been Lamar Jackson or somebody and then they turn around and lose the game, you wouldn't hear the end of it.
No, not at all, not at all. And to be fair to their, their team, they, they have some significant injuries on offense. And so they're not scoring like they usually would. And the fact is, you know, look, you have to face, this guy's 45 years old, so he's not the guy he was five, six years ago. He's not playing that great, he's missing a lot of passes, you know, he can't get out of the way, even less so now than he was able to before, and he never was that agile. A quarterback, so, you know, all of that is playing a part in their full start, I believe, because the defense is playing great. You know, they have been scoring the ball and, you know, all those factors play into that, I believe.
Yeah, I agree with you. One of the things, though, I think, I want to go to Todd Bowles, the head coach, and I know he's been trying to be cordial and, and be upfront. And I know there's some questions about Brady receiving preferential treatment, I guess Bowles has said, no, that's not the case. Other guys have been given time off and, but because they're not Brady, nobody seems to care. I think the one thing I will say though, and I don't know how prevalent it is for his team or other teams. But when you're struggling, you, and you, and people are getting time off, sure, you know, an emergency or a family situation. You would have to question that, so I, I would caution Todd Bowles in trying to be, you know.
Diplomatic, right?
Right, diplomatic's a better word. He, he needs to be careful of that because if this thing spins and they go eight and nine. People are going to have short memories about being accommodating and diplomatic and they're going to be wondering why, you know, did you run too loose of the ship? And we end up eight and nine, so I just, I think that's a cautionary tale for him, he needs to take control of that and make sure that that doesn't happen. Any, any surprises, I mean, there are a number of surprises in terms of ones, wins and losses for teams, any, anyone you want to speak to?
Well, I want to speak to my man Geno Smith. Geno, Geno's defined the odds and all the prognostications, he's playing very good football, he's at the top in all the rankings of quarterbacks.
Yes.
The others winning, I'm so happy for, I couldn't be happier for anybody that's playing right now than I am for Geno. You know, I'm really happy that he got a chance and he's showing that he's a, he's a good quarterback, he has talent, it's never, never is his first real opportunity. Unfortunately, he had that terrible incident when he was with the Jets, when he was going to be the starter and got the altercation, got his jaw broken.
Man, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, he never got another shot. So, now he's getting the shot, he's coming through, I'm really happy for him. And I can't, I mean, what can I say about the Giants and the Jets? I mean, this, this guy, they're blowing everybody away, nobody expected that from either of them. The Giants are incredible.
Yeah, they're combined nine and three.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess the folks in New York and New Jersey area are pretty happy about that. Yeah, so those are big surprises. And I guess on the other side of it, the surprise, if you look at the Denver Broncos, I'm surprised they're playing so poorly. I never expected that, given the way they played last year. You would think with the addition of Wilson that, you know, they were a bit better, but I think a lot of that has to do with the, the new head coach. Just one of those offensive geniuses so-called, who doesn't seem to know what the world he's doing. Comes to a team that led the league in rushing last year and they hardly run the ball, you know? It's incredible to me and there's a lot of other factors involved in that, injuries and stuff like that, but they've, they've been terrible.
Yeah, they're, they're wasting great defensive performances, man. I mean, they, they've been in every game, Russell, Russell's not playing that well, or at least up to his standards, but. And I, I'm not absolving him because when you're the quarterback, you have to take some responsibility. But I will say, I've seen them play four or five times now, I am totally unimpressed with this Nathaniel Hackett.
Oh, he does how he's doing.
I, I have, I don't know, particularly, I mean, even if you go back 40, 50 years, but now in the, in the era of wide open offenses and all that. Man, I haven't seen them do a jet sweep, I haven't seen them do anything, man, I just, they don't, they don't hardly run any screen plays, they don't. I mean, everything is just brought back. And then, you know, and then the fact of the matter is, any quarterback of Russell's height, you need, you need windows to throw in. That's why you roll out and you do certain things and quick hitters. And I just don't see that with them and I, and I, for the first time in his career, I see him kind of looking at that pass rush. Because you know, before, he, he's out, you know, trying to escape, he's always trying to look downfield and now, I know, there was a play the other night. Or I guess it was last night against the Chargers where the, the tight end was clearly in his line of sight, right, really right in front of him, about 10 yards up. And he just, he, he, he didn't even see. And it was just, you know, but, but that's because he's getting so much pressure that I think he's starting to feel it for. And I mean, it's not the first time he's been rushed like that, but I think because they're not scoring a lot of points, I think he's feeling it for a change. But I have no doubt he will rebound, but they got, they need something better.
They have to change the, the entire game.
I mean, it doesn't make sense, there was a, it, they're in the, I think it was in the, was in the, I think it was in the overtime. Denver gets the ball, Latavius Murray, who's been a late acquisition after Devonte Williams got hurt and he's out for a year. He carries the ball twice for nine yards. Opening the, opening the overtime, it's third and one, guess what Denver did?
Passed.
Passed the ball.
Of course, of course.
Think about, go ahead.
These teams, you go back to that, to the, to the Giant Ravens game, it was the same situation. This guy was a Drake, running all over the place.
Right, right, he was averaging like 12 yards a pop.
Yeah, they had first and goal from the five or six yard line. They never ran the ball. And I give it now, the tight end dropped the ball, hit him right in his face and in his chest and everywhere, in his hands. I mean, it's ridiculous that he did catch, but he didn't catch it. But the fact is, they never ran the ball and all these teams are doing that. They get down, they do not run the ball, they do not run the ball. And Dallas is getting back to that and what happened, they scored a couple touchdowns, right?
Yeah, and they're starting to play well and I know when the dad gets back, yeah.
And that's what they have to do. And it's a simple game if you play it, I mean, it's not simple, you know, but it's just the strategy, it's kind of basic.
No, I think you're right, it isn't, you know, that's probably part of the problem, that's, football is blocking, tackling and doing what you need to do at the times you need to do it. And the reason why I brought the issue about the third and one was that not only is it third and one after you've just averaged four and a half yards on two plays on the ground. But, but after the first quarter, Denver couldn't block anybody and Russell had a, you know, his last three quarters, he, he was under duress. So, if anytime you're going to run the ball, you run it on third and one, if it'd been third and six, I would, I understood it. And then sure enough, if I recall, the, the rush came hard, came quick and run, and it was a throw like a 25 yard out, the guy wasn't even open. So, that was even horrible.
Right, right.
You know, it just.
Most teams are doing that, most of these genius, offensive geniuses, they stop running the ball, they just don't do it. And that's, it's crazy, that'd be crazy, I mean, I watch the game. And they get right on the goal line and three passes and then they kick a field goal. And that's what happened with Baltimore, they should have been scoring touchdowns, they're scoring field goals, you know? They want to lose the game. Yeah, I see it over and over again, watching a lot of these teams play these days.
Yeah, it's maddening, man, it's maddening, you know, sometimes I wonder if I'm just a dinosaur, but no, I don't think so. And then the last, last, yeah, and then the last thing about last night, man, to show you how Denver just wasted that effort. Justin Herbert threw 57 passes.
That's right.
For under 240 yards, yeah, he barely averaged four yards per pass attempt.
I know.
No TDs.
Right.
I mean, just, it's incredible to waste that kind of effort. And to keep losing these games, that they've lost 17, 16, 19, 16, 12, 9, I mean, this is incredible.
I know, it is, it is.
It is incredible, man, they, they, and I.
They scored 21 points again, they'd be up 20.
Exactly, exactly, and I, and you know, and if, you know, I, I know it's rare to get fired after one year. Short of a scandal unless you're a black coach like Steve Wilks got fired in Arizona a few years ago. But, man, I'm going to tell you, I can see this guy leave because it's, because it's not just that they're losing. The wolves are circling because people get a sense that they, he doesn't know what he's doing.
Absolutely.
You know, he's wearing a headset, they've already made an allowance, remember when he, he struggled with time management in the first game against Seattle, first game of the year? They went out and hired a guy just for that, think about that. Think about that. You're a head coach and now they got to go hire somebody to, to help you keep time management.
I was already talking about to make the point this morning on one of the talk shows, saying that this guy got hired because Denver was trying to woo Aaron Rodgers at the time.
Yeah, that was the scuttlebutt, that was the scuttlebutt, yes, yes.
And when Rodgers did come, they were stuck with this guy, you know, stuck with him, not the one he's doing. So, you know, they, they should pull the plug on him, they should pull the plug.
Yeah, that is the scuttlebutt.
Yeah.
So, all right, good brother, with that said, we'll take a, a quick break and we'll be right back. All right, welcome back, everybody. So, let, let's, let's turn to the NBA. The NBA season starts tonight, October 18th. There are a couple of marquee games, Philly-Boston, that's an old marquee game. And Lakers-Warriors. You got any initial observations of either, either of those games or more likely the, the upcoming season?
Well, nothing about those particular games, the upcoming season is, I think, right with a lot of possibilities to talk about this. All kinds of speculation about what's going to happen with certain teams and, you know, the Lakers are always a hot topic, no matter what year it seems to be. There's always seems to be a lot going on there. And then there's the stuff up in Boston with the loss of the coach, how's that going to affect the team? The things that's going on with the Brooklyn Nets, you know, so there's a lot of things to talk about. It's going to be interesting in the season to see some guys coming back like Zion, you know, it's coming back, if he can stay healthy, what's going to happen if the Pelicans? So, a lot to look forward to, man. The Lakers always intriguing, as I said, just so drama around what's going to happen with Russell Westbrook and, you know, just in general. What's going to happen with them as a team? It's going to be pretty interesting to watch, see how that unfolds, if they can keep it together. And I don't know, is Carmelo Anthony still on that team?
No, he's not with them anymore, right now, I don't think he's with anybody right now.
Anybody right now, okay, I was wondering, I had to have his name mentioned. Yeah, so, it's going to be interesting to see what happens with the Lakers, I was surprised that they let, your man, I can't think of his name.
Malik Monk?
Malik Monk, yeah, his name is escaping me, that they let him walk out of the building. I thought he played very well for them last year and he's gave them the scoring points that they're going to need. And I don't know if they've addressed that with Shorblin or some of the other guys, but it's going to be interesting to see what happens with them always, you know? The Lakers, like I said, they're always a topic of discussion, you know, either good or bad, so, that's going to be interesting.
Yeah, staying with the Lakers, your point about Monk is an excellent one because they were a very less than stellar three-point shooting team last year. I think they, they shot less than 35%, which would, would made them in the lower third of the league. And so they weren't a very good three-point shooting team. And so, and I believe Monk shot near 40% from the three. And so obviously that's going to be a big loss and I guess they're hoping that they can replace him with, you know, Patrick Beverley. Even though he's not really an offensive player, he's been a decent three-point shooter. So, I guess, you know, they're looking at that. I guess they're hoping to get something out of Austin Reeves, you know, but I just, I think that's going to be their biggest weak point. That and hopefully keeping AD and LeBron healthy for them to even finish in the middle of the pack and be, you know, try to make some kind of statement in the playoffs. But I think to your point, in the, you know, it's, 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 it should be pretty wide open, believe it or not. I mean, I'm looking at like Boston and seeing how they're going to operate without Udoka. And then they did add Malcolm Brogdon and I think Gallinari on the bench, so they, they actually, they had a lot of good, good players. And you know, given that they made the finals last year, you would think they're, they're in a good position to make another run. So, you know, we'll, we'll see how the absence of Ime Udoka will affect them. I think Milwaukee is looking good, they get Middleton back and a lot of us have felt that if Middleton had not been hurt, they would have gotten past Boston and played in the finals.
I think so.
You know, and Giannis is just playing out of his mind, I love to see him play, so. And then Philly, man, Philly, you know, with a full season with Harden and Embiid together along with a, a much improving Maxey. And then they picked up P.J. Tucker, who's going to give them that little grit and grime and defense that they need. So, it's going to be interesting to see if they can stay healthy and make a run. And then of course, the, the, the big question mark to a lot of people, like you said, was Brooklyn. You know, and seeing if, you know, with Simmons and Durant and Kyrie. And if they can keep people healthy, they also had a couple of good pickups that'll help them up front with Royce O'Neal and T.J. Warren, even though Warren's been out for a couple of years. And so, I think it's going to be real interesting, man. And then I think the, maybe the most marquee player that changed teams, Donovan Mitchell was playing with Cleveland and Cleveland is a very good young team. So, they're not, they probably won't contend for the title, but they're going to make some noise and.
I think so.
And then I think the West is wide open. You know, you got Phoenix and you want. And then I think the West is wide open, um, you know, you got Phoenix and you wonder what's gonna happen because of, apparently there's a rift between. Coach Monty Williams and their star center, uh, Ayton, and then you have Chris Paul, is, is a year older, and he didn't play very well down the stretch. Uh, against Dallas, um, and then you have this notion that I guess as of last week, Jay Crowder wants to be traded. He's starting forward for them, so you really wonder what's going on in Phoenix. And so it looks like that's gonna be difficult for them to win sixty-plus games a year with that. Um, you got any comments on any of that?
Uh, not really, um, you know, I'm just waiting to see what happens, man, like you said, it's wide open, I'm interested to see what Memphis does. They have a really good young team.
Yeah, you expect them to keep growing.
Get better, get better, right, this guy, John Moran, I saw some highlights of him the other day. It was just ridiculous the talent this guy has, and, uh, so many guys like that these days, so they're so athletic and. Acrobatic, whatever you wanna call it, really amazing, I feel, so it's just, it's gonna be fun to watch a lot of these guys, and, uh. I, I, I don't have any strong feelings about who's gonna come, you know, through in the end, but a lot of it hinges on the things you, you mentioned, uh. They can straighten out this stuff in Brooklyn, all the talent they have, you know, they, they're gonna be hard to beat, and if they stay healthy. And, uh, it's, it's gonna be very interesting, and, uh, I think, I think the, one of the key things for Philly. It's, it's name to escape from me, I guess it's my old age, man, but that, the forward, I can't think of the guy that started forward. On Philadelphia, oh, God.
You, you, you're not talking about Danny Green?
No, 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 it's the other fellow who's supposed to be a scoring points, they got him coming.
Oh, oh, uh, Tobias Harris.
Yeah.
Tobias Harris.
He, he's always a key to them, and, uh, I think he's underperformed on their expectations over the last couple of years. If they can get what they thought they would get out of him, and they got him, you know, they, they'll be a real threat. They, but they have the main fellow, the big fellow in the middle, and, uh, who's one of my favorite players to watch. And Joel Embiid, man, he can do everything.
Yeah, he's an excellent player, and I, I actually think Philly's improved their roster over last year because. When you watch them play, man, uh, you, you, they, I, you know, and I, and again, that, you, you know, you, you. An aging Danny Green, and he ended up unfortunately tearing up his knee in the playoffs. And then you had the, you know, Nying, who was one-dimensional, I mean, you had a couple of three guys like that. I, when I looked at them, you know, as, as the, the, the competition level increased. You, you, they just, I, I felt, even if Harden had played at, at his previous All-Star levels. I just didn't see them going that far because I just thought they were limited. I actually think. You know, again, a lot of it, like you said before, is, is gonna be contingent upon good health, but they added not only PJ Tucker. But they added, uh, uh, Ma- uh, uh, Montrezl Harrell, and they also added Melton from Memphis. And he's a pretty good guard, so they, they beefed up their team, uh, they got some other weapons now, and some guys that can do some things, you know. Uh, you know, rim chase, make a three, play good D, and I think, you know, you know, and again, if Harden can just get. He doesn't have to be the Harden of five years ago, but if he can get to that twenty-point, ten assists. Consistent Harden shoot, you know, maybe thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent from the three. With Embiid in there, they got a chance, and like you said, Tobias Harris should be a twenty-point game scorer, I agree with that.
Right, right.
Uh, and so a lot of that's gonna, you know, Doc Rivers is gonna have to find a way that, to, to mesh this in a positive way. Couple other, the, the real quick things before we move on, uh, I think the Clippers are the ones that a lot of people, if they can get their health. With Kawhi coming back, Paul George healthy, they got John Wall, they got an excellent coach in Ty Lou. And last year, you know, they, they, they got into the plan with, with all those injuries.
That's true.
And so I really expect them to, to be in the mix, you know, I.
It comes down to a matter of how healthy Kawhi is.
Exactly, exactly.
He's back in his old form, they, they're gonna be a handful out there, no question, no question.
Well, tonight, uh, because of rain delays, um, um, or rain postpone, postponements, uh, Cleveland and, and the Yankees. Uh, are scheduled to play game five, actually, I guess it's today, daytime. Uh, game five of the, um, uh, the, uh, ALDS. And so the winner of that will take on the Houston Astros, and so in the National League, in the, uh, NLCS. You have Philly and San Diego, and then the National League, Houston waiting for the winner, Cleveland and New York. Any, uh, initial observations you have?
Yeah, well, well, you know, I'm a traditionalist, and I don't like the playoff system at all. I think it's, and, and.
Well, let's start there, go there, go, go on, go for it.
Yeah, what happened this year is exactly the kind of thing that I, you know, I was seeing, I was. I anticipate happening at some point, where you have a team like the Dodgers, wins a hundred eleven games in the regular season. And they get knocked out, you know, so, you know, it's like, I, I understand why they do this, it's a revenue generator, it keeps some. Cities interested, and, you know, the fans interested a little bit longer with this playoff stuff. So, I, I just don't like the system, because the best teams don't necessarily play in the World Series, and that's what's gonna happen this year. You know, whoever it is, I mean, if, if Houston gets in, it'd be great for the American League. Uh, but, uh, you know, if it turns out to be Houston, the supposed Guardians knock the Yankees off. And then somehow beat Houston, you know, then you got, the Guardians playing the Phillies or the Padres in the World Series. And neither of those teams are the best teams in either of their leagues, but yet they're representing and here they're playing for the world championship in baseball. So I, I just don't like the playoff system, like I said, I know why they do it, but I've, I've been against that from the beginning. And the second thing I'll say about this whole playoff system is, uh, what I call lazy journalism among the broadcasters. It drives me nuts every year, and they continually do the same thing, and I don't know if their motivation is, might have some nefarious. Uh, reason for doing it, for this postseason statistic crap. They never separate World Series, uh, records from this playoff postseason stuff. The other day, Judge hit a homerun, it was his twelfth homerun, and postseason homerun. And the announcer had to say that he had the nerve to say, he's not tired with Lou Gehrig. And I think it was Reggie Jackson, now, now, Reggie, I don't know if Reggie played in this format or not, I don't, I don't remember. When he retired, if they had started just.
Yeah, he played in the playoffs, but they didn't have as many rounds as they have now.
Yes, so, so Reggie shouldn't be mentioned in this, as far as I'm concerned, you talk about Lou Gehrig and Mickey Mantle, or Yogi Berra. You know, who has the most home runs in, in the history of the game in World Series competition, flat out, you know. But now you comparing all these fringe games that they play in this playoff system. And calling the postseason statistics, and these guys are moving up in the numbers, they don't, they don't take the time to separate them, and that, that thing does egregious. It just drives me nuts, and it's just laziness, and, and, and it's, it, it informs people, really, it really does, you know. And, uh, so, so yeah, I'm a old dinosaur when it comes to baseball, I like, you know, the two best teams squaring off in, in October and get it over with. But, uh, that's just where I stand on that, so, I don't, I don't, you know, I, I've, I've lost my interest in baseball pretty much, to be honest. About it, just the whole way the game has changed, and there's too many changes, too many things they don't do anymore, it's too many strikeouts tolerated. You know, guys hit two forty, hit thirty home runs, he's a great player, I mean, those guys, you know, when I, when I grew up watching baseball. That kind of guy would have trouble getting into the major leagues if he got a shot at all. And, uh, you know, perfect example is that, I, I'm like Dick Stewart, Dick Stewart hitting sixty, seventy home runs in the minor leagues. And he barely, he took eight, nine years before he got into the majors, you know, and he was a, a productive ballplayer when he got in, cause he kept hitting those. You know, had, had those kind of numbers, he hit thirty, you know, tried forty homeruns, something like that, but he struck out tremendously. And he had a better average than a lot of these guys that are playing today, but, uh, so, so that's my gripe, you know, he and I'm a little dinosaur. And, uh, whatever you wanna call me, I'll, I'll, I'll wear that mantle proudly, but, uh, so. I, I, I almost lost interest completely in baseball, to be honest about it, I, I watch, there's some players I like watching play. And, uh, but, eh, you know, I couldn't care less really who won, who didn't win, I'm no longer a real fan of any team, so.
Well, I think your point, your points speak to why baseball is, you know, some of the reasons baseball is losing some of their fans, as I've. You know, me and you've talked about in the past, I think baseball is largely becoming a regional sport with, with, with some, some rare exception. Uh, that, that, you know, outside of maybe the Yankees and the Dodgers. Um, most of the teams, you know, are generally only followed in any real sense by people in their local markets. Um, and I just think that, that so many things have contributed to that, and some of which are what you speak to. And, and I, and I'm gonna add something to it, you know, when you talk about the laziness. Um, you, you're right on time, but also it's lack of context, it's like, if you're gonna talk about postseason statistics. You have to immediately tell the audience that before nineteen sixty-nine, there was just, like you said, the winner of the American League, winner of the National League. World Series, one round, anywhere from four to seven games, I mean, there was some time briefly in the nineteen teams, they played nine games, but. You get the sense, and so you cannot compare somebody, you know, like, and a lot of these guys, when, you know. That when they say, oh, they passed Berra, or Gehrig, or Snyder, or somebody that played in the. The, you know, the pennant only era, I mean, the, um, uh, non, so-called non-playoff era. They also don't talk about the number of games it takes guys to get there.
Exactly.
Because, and you spoke about Reggie, even Reggie only played in, you know, they played a, a, a league championship series. And then the World Series, but now they got a wild card round, they got a, uh, you know, a LDS round. They got a league championship series round, so, you know, uh, uh, if, if a guy, and that's what you're seeing with players like, and I'm not diminishing, but like. Jose Altuve is way up on a lot of these lists now, because to Houston's credit, under the present day. They have made deep runs, I think they've gotten to the league championship series six straight years now.
Yeah, they're always in playoffs, right.
So, but because of all those rounds of games. You know, it, it didn't take long, think about this, Altuve, uh, you know, six year, when, when it's all said and done, he had six years. Of playing at least two rounds of the playoffs, cause you know, some years they weren't in the wild card round, but they definitely won the division series. So that's six years of at least two rounds, lot of years, three rounds, and think of the number of games he's playing. And it's, and again, it's nothing against him, but how you gonna compare him, in six years, he could play more playoff games than. Garrett, Ruth, all them who, the Yankee, all those Yankee teams that were in the playoffs all the time, I mean, in the World Series all the time. So you're right, I mean, but now, the reason why they do it is beyond lazy, what it is, it's, it's economic. They want you to believe that what you're watching today is the best thing smoking.
Right, right.
So if they can tell you that, uh, Aaron Judge has just tied Lou Gehrig, that's supposed to go, wow. Without context.
You're right, you're right.
And I'm, and I, you know, nothing against Aaron Judge, but I'm willing to bet you that even with his prodigious power. He probably has played more postseason games than Lou Gehrig played World Series games, you know, and still.
And, and the, and the rub is, Aaron Judge has just played a World Series game.
That's right, I forgot about that, and that's, and that's the other part of what I wanted to talk about, cause you, you mentioned it very well. Before nineteen sixty-nine, the best of the American League played the best of National League, and with almost. Never would you, you know, it was always teams winning ninety-something or a hundred games in each league, so you're playing the best team. Now, you're right, just like you said this year, if, if Cleveland plays San Diego, Philly, neither it's. San Diego or Philly, if I can recall, won ninety games this year.
No, no.
And matter of fact, in the National League, three teams won a hundred and one or more games, Atlanta won one oh one, the Mets won one oh one. The Dodgers won one eleven, and every one of those teams lost, didn't, didn't win a playoff round, none of them won a playoff round. So, you're right about that, now, the one thing that, the only, the only, it, it, it does hurt. People like yourself, because a lot of people feel like you feel, they're just like, man. And you even wonder about the newer fans who don't know anything about pre-nineteen sixty-nine, you just wonder at some points, like. How fair is that, you play a hundred and sixty-two games. And you win a hundred and eleven, and then you play a five-game series, and now you're gone? Cause I even wonder about the five-game part about it, so, that doesn't even make a lot of sense.
Stuff like fourteen out of nineteen times, something like that, and, and won twenty-two more games than they did overall. I mean, and then you get bounced out of the, a short series that you happen not to perform that well in. And you go home and they go, have a chance to go to the World Series if they beat the Phillies.
Now, the only thing I will say, not necessarily forward, but I understand why people say, well, hey. Everybody starts the season understanding the rules.
Yeah.
And so, a lot of times, what, we're seeing more and more, is that. Uh, certain teams will feel they have the rosters to make the playoffs at the beginning of the season. Not that they're losing games intentionally, but, you know, they'll rest guys more, they'll, cause they wanna be, you know, uh, rested and. And healthy for the playoffs, so they can make a good push, so, you know, that, that's the new, new game. But back to your thing about postseason stats, man, I, I'm done with that, I, I'm with you, I can't stand it, I can't stand it, and I think it. And for a game like baseball, that's always, uh, celebrated its past. Probably much more than any other sport, they're doing the opposite with that.
Yeah, they, they're integrating the accomplishments of all these great.
It's the opposite of that now, which I, I don't think helps them long-term.
No, no, I agree.
Whereas you're gonna have all these guys, and now, I'm gonna separate Altuve, because he's an excellent player. But there's, there's a number of players that, that have been on those kinds of teams like Houston. That have good postseason stats, and you see them up there, and you're gonna see them up there with, with all-time great players, and it just. Does a disservice, so I, I don't disagree with you.
And how hard is it to, to separate the two? It's not at all.
Well, it's not hard at all, it's not hard at all.
Guys leading in, in playoff home runs, you know, but this guy's leading in home, in World Series home runs.
Exactly, no, it's not hard.
Simple as that.
It's not hard at all, and matter of fact, if you go on some of the baseball reference sites, they have them both listed. They have World Series only, then they have postseason, so, I mean, it's not that difficult, but you're right, they never do it, they never do it. And matter of fact, the only time you actually hear a World Series stat is when somebody is approaching a World Series. But everything is postseason.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Cause you know, there've been a number of players that went past Mantle in home runs because they played so many games. You know, oh, they just passed Mackie, but they'll say postseason home runs.
Right, right, exactly, right, don't tell you that this guy played sixty games to get there.
Well, and, and then, you know, and then like, 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 like we talk about, like, you know, this, I know, you know, people are gonna say, well, you beating the dead horse, you old dinosaurs, but. But, but, but a younger generation or the uninitiated should understand. The significance of what you're doing, it's like, you take Mantle, all the years he played in the World Series, and just as an example. And some of the pitchers and the, you know, Kofax of the Dodgers, Drysdale of the Dodgers. You know, you think about the pitchers that they, you know, you know, that he was batting against, Warren Spine of the Braves.
Exactly.
That, that's the point, you know, that, that gets lost, you know, it just, so, yeah, I, I'm with you, man. Now, relative to, I'll just take a quick look at, with the playoffs, um, you know, I think, to your point, I, I, I hate to admit, I've lost a little interest too. Because, I don't know, you wanna see the best play, but that being said, Philly and San Diego have done what they needed to do. Uh, they, they, you know, they won the series they needed to win, and I, you know, so I, I guess Philly has a little better offense than San Diego. San Diego's slightly better overall pitching, even though their starters are pretty comparable, so, it, it's hard to pick. I, matter of fact, I can't pick anybody in that, you know, cause I don't know, you know, when you look at San Diego, you got Darvish and. Uh, Blake Snell, who can come up big sometime, and I guess Musgrove, who's had a couple of good years with San Diego, and then when you go to Philly. Zach Wheeler and Aaron Nola are their best starters, so. I think in American League, though, I think a lot of people wanna see the Yankees and Houston.
Yeah.
Because they're the best two teams in American League, and act frankly, the best two teams left. So, uh, we'll see what happens today when New York and, and Cleveland finishes up, and. But I, 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 I will pick Houston to come out the, the American League, I, I think. And then I think it would be a nice, tidy, bold to tie around Dusty Baker's career. And hopefully he'll get in the Hall of Fame the next year or two, cause that's ridiculous, he's not in.
Oh, it is, it is, yeah, that'd be great if, if Houston could win it.
Yeah, it would be good.
Despite the fact that, uh, uh, did he, did he win more, did he win the most games in the American League this year?
Yeah, they won a hundred and six games, yeah, I mean, they were pretty much the Dodgers of the American League.
Right, right.
I mean, they just blistered the American League, I mean, and matter of fact. Uh, almost to your point, if you get the, the Yankees, and again, nothing against Cleveland, cause I like the way they scrap and they make contacts, I actually like that kind of team. But, but Houston and, and the Yankees were one-two, I think, in home runs, with the Yankees being number one, and I think they were one-three in runs scored. And then even in team ERA, they were one-two Houston to New York, so, uh, they are, and, and they had the best records. So, they are clearly the best two teams in the American League, so, if you get the Yankees. Even though I know they limp to the finish line. Cause they, you know, they've been, their offense, as we mentioned in, in our last episode, has not been that great the second half of the year, out, outside of Aaron Judge.
That's true, it's disappeared.
Yeah, it's disappeared, so, hey, man, I wanna, I wanna kinda, let's get off, get out of the sports world for a minute, I wanna kinda. See what you think about the, the. See what you think about the, the recent, uh, revelation that the FBI. Uh, was surveilling Aretha Franklin for over four decades. Now, I'm not surprised because. You know, all of us, me and you are probably getting surveilled right now, just cause we raising the issue. Um, you know, it, it, I think what it really does, it just puts another feather in Aretha's cap, actually, because. Not only was she a fantastic singer and humanitarian, but it just shows you her conscious level. She had very good relationships with Martin Luther King, uh, she's, she's reported to have tried to bail Angela Davis out in nineteen seventy. When Angela Davis was in pri- uh, uh, in jail. Um, and she also did a benefit, I think, e- a- event for her, where she raised some money for her a couple of years later, so. I think all of that goes into why she was surveilled, so I don't know if you have.
Absolutely. And anybody that stands up for truth and justice and freedom in this country. Has been surveilled by the, the US government, you can count on that, you know, that, especially persons of color. But, uh, you stand up for the rights of black people and people in general, cause, cause the black folks get rights, everybody gets them in this country. And, uh, anytime you stand up for that, your enemy of the state, you paint it as a communist or whatever, which is what happened with Hoover and. Probably still goes on today, same to some extent. So it's not surprising at all, and again, kudos to Aretha. You know, I just, somebody made a comment about, uh, you know, and, uh, when somebody, when Nixon had a list, an enemies list. And somebody said, well, if I'm not on it, I'll be pissed off. In the cap of anybody else. Makes those lists, or that kinda surveillance, when they're standing up for truth and justice and what's right.
And there you go, yeah, cause that's what gets twisted so much. Gets twisted so much, you're just standing up for basic human rights, and some kinda way, something's wrong with you, I mean.
A racist society, it always has been, and it hasn't changed yet. So it's not surprising that folks like that get labeled and surveilled and files on it and all that kinda crap, you know. And, uh, so it's not surprising, like I said, it's a feather in my cap. Yeah, you know, Aretha's a wonderful lady, always loved her.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, and, and, and then when you consider that Angela Davis's, uh, uh, relationship with the Black Panthers and all that, what that meant. You know, and you think about coin tail pearl and all the things that they've done, I mean. It just, it's amazing, man, it's amazing. But it also shows that they thought she was a threat and she was a power. And, um, and they had to, you know, follow her, but she was, she was such a regal lady. You know, like you say, her, she, her feather goes up even higher, if that makes sense, in that cap, so, yeah. Hey, speaking of racism and racists, man, this, this scandal, uh, here in Los Angeles with the. Members of the LA City Council and also the former president of LA County Federation of Labor. Uh, I, I think most people have heard of that by now, they were caught. Um, on some audio tape, which I guess was actually recorded last year sometime. And, uh, I guess it was the, well, now former council president and LA council person, Nury Martinez, who seemed to. Make most egregious and racist comments, but on that phone call was also Kevin DeLeon and Gilbert Sadio. And both are longtime local and state legislators. That, that, that've served in the California State Legislature, have been local councilmen, of course, those two are still there. And as of we speak now, there's a, immense and intense pressure for them to step down and resign. And Martinez and Herrera resigned, uh, within the last week or so. There, um, Martinez from the council, Herrera from his position as, uh, President of LA County Federation of Labor. So, uh, aside like to Sadio, he actually lost his election in June. To a very progressive candidate, a lady, I think her name is Unisa Hernandez. She's in her early thirties, some people, I think she belongs to a socialist party or something, and she beat him. She beat him, uh, in June, and so he actually has to leave his seat, I believe, in December, so he's gonna lose his seat anyway, but I think. Uh, people hope he makes the proper gesture and steps down before then, cause he still has almost two more months to sit. And I know that the rest of the council has relieved him and DeLeon of all of their committee chair, or committee assignments. But, um, man, it just shows you, you know, and you know, black folks just can't, you know, catch a break. And here we are in, in this so-called melting pot. Now, I know we all understand the real deal. But still, you know, that these folks are that careless and have these kinda things that they can be so racist. And overwhelmingly, it was against black people, you know, they made some comments about, you know, Koreans and whatever. But it just shows you, man, and then, of course, I, I, I may have mentioned to you off the air, you know, Sadio is also a fellow Bruin like we are. And, um, he was actually a counselor in the UCLA outbound program I was part of. And it just, you know, but none of that matters, we know it, you know, from what did Malcolm say, uh. Bigotry and racism, it's, it's not, you know, south of the Canadian border when people talk about it being down south. So this kinda fits that, man, and. You know, and I know, I, I think Herrera, you know, so, you know, I guess. If people wanna be fair in quotations, he didn't actually contribute anything, but he's apologized since for not. Calling out the vile comments. And then I think DeLeon and Sadio took a lesson, even though I think they did participate a little bit. But, you, you know, you, you have to call it out, man, how do you do that? And, and you're in districts that even if they're ma- ma- majority Latino. There are black people in those districts, there are Asians in those districts, there are white people in some of those districts. And, and, and here you are, and, and the whole idea was, the com- the, the, the conversation they had was about redistricting. And about, and I guess indirectly, if not directly, trying to minimize, uh, black participation in black districts. So this was very egregious. And so I don't know if you have anything you wanna add to that, but.
No, I just said it's not surprising, uh, you know, it, it doesn't surprise me at all that people harbor those sentiments towards black folks, uh. That's, that's been the history of this country, and it comes in all shades and all colors, you know, so. The fact that some Hispanic people is regrettable, and you can't paint all, all Hispanics like that, you know, and, uh, but you know, like. And we came because of our time, damn sure, I decided I'll speak for myself, of all kinds of people. And there were a lot of Latino friends who were outstanding, wonderful people. Think about John Hernandez and, uh, uh, other people that I worked with at UCLA and went to school with. Who were just wonderful human beings, and then there were others who you knew were racist, you know, and they all harbor the same kinda sentiments. That this young, this woman ex- expressed in a conversation, so I'm not surprised by that at all, that, that it exists. It's unfortunate that people in positions of power, you know, feel that way, and, and I'm sure act that way, in, in, in carrying out their official duties. You know, that, that, that harms us in, in many ways that we never know about. So, on, on that level, this, you know, reprehensible and terrible, it's not surprising, not to me, I, I've been around too long to be surprised, I guess.
Yeah, I. Yeah, it is, and I, I think, uh, if, if there is a, um, silver lining to this. And maybe I'm overblown this, but it, there's been a number of non-black, um, um, groups and. Individuals, and a lot of them Hispanic, who have come to the forefront to denounce this and ask for their resignations. And so I think it speaks to your point about, you know, not painting everybody with a broad brush. You know, but, but again, it's so disturbing when you see people in the leadership position, these are three of only fifteen council members with some of the most powerful. Government positions, actually, in the United States, when you consider the size of the city of Los Angeles. And the type of budgets that they have and the number of people that they represent. Yeah, and that's why, yeah, and that's why it's problematic, and that's why they shouldn't go. I know Karen Bass, who's running for, uh, mayor here with, uh, Rick Caruso. She's denounced it, you know, she's a, presently, she's a congressperson, um. Uh, and so she stepped up at, um, in both, uh, uh, in the statement and also at, at one of her debates with Caruso, and she said it. Cannot be tolerated, so, like I said, the silver lining is a lot of people stepped up and denounced that, and that's good to hear. Cause we don't hear that, uh, we have been hearing that less and less among folks, particularly the Republican Party, when it comes to racist comments. They, they've gone from silence to embracing it in, in, in certain arenas, and so. So it is refreshing that we still have decent people who will denounce things that should be denounced. Hey, man, before we, we conclude this episode, um, you got any other observations, any quick, quick hitters you wanna speak to?
Uh, no, no, just, uh, interesting to see, you know, how the rest of this NFL season pans out. See if the Giants can keep their winning streak going, and, uh, to, to see what happens, nothing, nothing particularly jumps out at me at the time.
Okay, um, any, any comments on that Draymond Green issue with, uh, Jordan Poole?
You know, I, I don't know how to feel about that, I, I don't know if it's supposed to do about nothing, or, or what, you know, I, I'm sure guys get into scuffles all the time. And, uh, from what I saw, I, I haven't paid no attention to it, I saw the clip, and in the clip. Before he punched him, Poole pushed him, so he responded with a punch. Now, whether that was proper or not, you know, you argue one way or the other, but I just, I just see this a whole lot of, uh, about nothing to me. I, I don't know, you know, what the, uh, gist of it is, I'm not, I'm not in that organization of, you know, in a privy to what's going on. You know, internally there, but, uh, you know, I don't, I don't have much to say about that, we'll just see what happens, you know, they'll play it up like. It's not the worst thing I've ever seen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think your points are well taken, I, I think the, the, the bigger issue with that. Uh, particularly since, uh, Poole wasn't hurt, or seriously hurt. Is that what is, what the aftermath has been, cause I, I like you, you know, if this hadn't been, uh, caught on tape and released to the public. Uh, you know, I'm, scuffle's going all the time, uh, if you wanna, but I think the issue, I think that, that really is, 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 uh. The elephant in the room now is what I, you know, that, what I call production tolerance, because. You got, um, um, I won't call him an aging, but a getting older, uh, Draymond Green, who's been central to their four titles. And he's on a team now that has some young guys that play his position or play on the front line with James Wiseman and Kaminga. You know, that, that are set to really, well, Wiseman to, to play period, and Kaminga to get an enhanced role. So it gives him that depth, and then you, 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 you add the fact that Poole and, um, Wiggins. Uh, resigned, Poole got, I guess, a reported four years, a hundred forty million, and Wiggins resigned for four years, a hundred nine, a hundred ten million. Which means that they're gonna be there a while, and so I think that it sends a message, I would be very surprised if Draymond Green is on his team past this season. With that type of investment in Poole, they're kinda telling everybody what we think of Jordan Poole. And I think Draymond's contract ends after this year, so given his age.
But I, I don't know if that's related to this incident or not, see, I don't, like, that's what I'm saying, I'm not in this, I don't know what, you know, what caused that flare up.
Well, the, the, the contract was just signed since that, so it wasn't before that. Uh, some people, some people, you know, and I, and I'm not gonna give Draymond a pass, some people have speculated he's having some off-the. Court issues, and some of it was, he wasn't happy that they haven't extended him yet, but that, I, I don't, I, I'm not buying that.
That's what I'm alluding to, I don't know. Flare up or not, so I don't wanna start throwing that in there like that's a reason, or you're not trying to get in this.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not giving any reasons, I'm just saying that I think the, the result of this is, I just think that. Um, the fact that they, they re-up Wiggins, they gave Poole a serious. Uh, thirty-five million dollars a year over four years, I just think that just, and with, with the, um, the, the, uh. Pending development and increased role of Wiseman and Kaminga, I just think that, I think you're gonna see Green out of there.
I, I think that's just a natural evolution of what's gonna happen anyway.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I think now it's gonna be, I, 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 I guess I go from, if it was likely, po- or possibly to. That, that, that's what I'm saying, cause I think. Oh, absolutely, because if, let's say if, if the Warriors win it again, almost win it, and Draymond plays well, and this didn't happen. There's a chance they might bring him back for a couple of years, uh, say, hey, let's run this back one more time, but I just think. That this, and, 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 and maybe I'm, I'm inferring a problem with Draymond, I think the issue is. I don't know how the players internally take that, um, cause I don't disagree with you that a lot of teams have these issues. But I don't know how the players privately take it, you know, I don't know, you know, we know what they've said publicly, they've all said the right things. From Kerr to Klay Thompson to Steph Curry, Iggy Dollar, they've all said the, the right things, private, I mean, publicly. But you just wonder privately.
It would all come down to what, what this, this couple was about, you know, absolutely, you know, what set it off.
See, I, I, I haven't been, I'm like you, I haven't been trying to speculate, but now, you, I, I'll tell you what I've heard. A lot of, it seems to be that they said that Draymond came in there with the idea of starting something. That he was berating, uh, Poole, that, that's what I heard. And that he got up and pushed, you know, it started at a distance, he walked up on Poole, he kept berating, and Poole just said, man, get away from me. And then, of course, people said that Poole didn't take it that serious, other man, get off of me, and then not understanding that. At least from the street, you, you, you push somebody, you better be ready to defend yourself. And Draymond, but that, that, now again, as I say that, I'm, I'm, I, let me, that's what it, I, it. Allegedly happened, I'm gonna say allegedly, cause I really wanna be fair to Draymond. I don't know that. I don't know that, but, and that's why I said until I just gave you that little report or the alleged report.
If that, if that is accurate, that, that Draymond is guilty of misplaced anger.
Right, right, if, no, you're right, if that's true.
And now that it's a shallow player, you know, this guy's a threat to me, he's taking my job and I'm pissed with him, you know, I mean, come on.
Well, now, I, I don't think it's that, because they play different positions, but, 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 and I'm not, I'm not alleging that it was contract-related. But they were just saying that, that, that Draymond came in there with a bone to pick. I, I, to take it further, I think that the inference to that allegation is that. Maybe Draymond thought Poole was getting too big for his britches. Like, I'm a four-time champion, you a neophyte, don't get too big for your britches, I mean, that's kinda the inference, but. You know, cause, cause if you watch Poole play, you know, he is a little chippy on the floor, but again, a lot of guys are chippy, you know, so.
That's your teammate, so what? Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't, see, I don't know about egos and all that kinda.
Well, of course, I'm with you, I'm with you, and I'm from the camp, man. You know, I'm from the camp that, you know, like, I, I would prefer guys not do that to another player. And, you know, handle your business in a, in a, in a different way, but. But like I said, I didn't wanna make that about Draymond being the bad guy, I just wanted to say that. But I call it, I think him being there at the end of the season's gonna be more about production tolerance. If he's producing at a high level, maybe they can tolerate it. Any, any awkwardness or un- uncomfortable ability, if that's a word, but, um. Yeah, and I like Dray- I love the way Draymond plays, I like his, you know, the way he plays defense, he does all the little things, you know. You know, and, and to be honest with you, I hated to see something like this happen, because he's, he's been such a good player. And, and, you know, but just, I just don't understand when these guys get to that level. Hey, man, I don't know if I got much more, other than I want to give a shout-out, uh, to a legend, I mean. And that's Jackie Robinson. Uh, you know, he died fifty years ago this month, and we lost him at the age of fifty-three. And much too young, but we know the stress of what he did, uh, to make it easier for everybody else to come behind him. But I just wanted to shout out, you know, what a, not only a great player, but a great human being he was, what a fighter he was. I, you know, I, I'm still, I still, it's, it's remarkable. That as, his primary position, I guess, in his career was second base, though he played other positions first outfield. Uh, you know, he, he, he has one of the highest, um, uh, OPS pluses, home base percentage. War numbers, even though I'm not into war, but I just wanna throw that out for the modern-day people, and he only played ten years. And I was getting ready to say that, he was passing, you know, well, in his prime, it's just amazing how great a player, and I think what he did. And the doors he opened, people forget how great a baseball player he was. It's almost gotten to the point like, well, we only know him because of the doors he opened, he was a tremendous player.
That's true, and unfortunately, as you know, I was blessed to have been born at a time in Brooklyn. When Jackie came up.
Wow, share that.
His entire career, so, so you'd have to tell me what. His entire career. So, so you'd have to tell me what a great ballplayer. He's the most exciting ballplayer I've ever seen. Uh, I could tell you stories about things I saw in Ebbets Field and Jackie Robinson doing, that, you know, to blow your mind. I've never seen anybody else do. He was tremendous athlete, tremendous human being. Can't say enough about him. One of my all-time heroes. You know, be- behind my father, my brother, you know, Jackie right there with them, and, uh, I love him, can't say enough about him. Uh, one of my big heroes growing up. And, uh, yeah, everything you said about Jackie, a tenfold, man, yes. He's, he's just, uh, you can't say nothing good things about that man. You know, he, he's amazing, amazing guy. And to put up what he put up with and produce like he did, is unbelievable, unbelievable.
And, you know, I've always felt like if, if Jackie and, and, and everybody that followed him, if they didn't have to put up what they, put up with all that vileness and that racism. Think about the numbers he would have put up. I mean, you know, if he, if he, you know, if he could hit three eleven with that, I mean, he might've hit three sixty-one without it. You know, I mean, cause it had to take a toll, man, I mean.
And in the bottom line, he was twenty-eight years old as a rookie.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, come on, you know?
So, by the time he got in his fourth or fifth year, he was already past his prime.
Who knows what he would have done? He was tremendous. He was tremendous. Oh, man, you can't say enough about Jackie. He could play everything with a four-letter man at UCLA.
I was getting ready to say that, and they, baseball was his worst sport.
That's right, that's right. Basketball players on Pac-ten, outstanding football players.
Yeah, he averaged, I, what'd they say? He averaged eleven yards to carry at UCLA?
Yeah, ridiculous.
He, he was, I think he led, uh, in junior college at Pasadena City College, he led it in scoring and basketball. And then we know he was a tremendous track. Yeah, I mean, and his brother Mac was a, was, was an Olympic medalist.
Olympic medalist, that's right, that's right.
So, yeah, man. People better, never forget Jackie, and he opened doors in more than just baseball.
Yeah, he did, he did. He did.
As he took it on.
Before we go, I have to mention the Alabama-Tennessee game. I can't get away without talking about that. That was an exciting, tremendous game, despite all the penalties. And the play of those two quarterbacks was just unbelievable. It was the battle of who's gonna have the ball last and who's gonna win the game. And, uh, it was very exciting. I, I can't say enough about, I, I can see why Bryce Young won the Heisman last year. He was, the coolest guy I've ever seen under the kind of pressure he was under. He never seemed to get flustered. No matter what happens, he's always picking his teammates up and encouraging and encouraging. He's a tremendous leader, tremendous talent. And this guy Hooker, who I hadn't heard much about before the season, is just tremendous, man. I, I don't know what they're gonna do in the draft next year. I, I can see Stroud, Hooker, and, and, and Bryce Young going one, two, three, in, in whatever combination, any direction. But these guys are just tremendous, man. But that was a heck of a game. What, what do you think about it?
Oh, I, I, I agree with you. Um, and you're right, the, the team with the ball last did win the game, and you're right. Um, Bryce Young, now it did, was he just, he, he had a great game along with Hooker, but Young, man, he took some punishment.
Ah, tremendous.
And, and I mean, and of course, you don't want him to take the punishment, but the fact that he kept getting, never was intimidated. He never was looking for the rush. He was hanging in that pocket. And that, you're right, man. You can see why he won the Heisman and why, even at his height, he's gonna be a top-five draft choice, if not the top one. And the only way he won't, well, I know now that we have Kyler Murray and to a less extent Baker Mayfield in terms of height, uh, that went number one in the draft the last few years. I mean, this kid can throw the ball all over the field. And he's smart. And this hand and Hooker, man, woo.
Oh, my goodness. He, there's nothing he can't do either. And he's a bigger guy too. He can run, strong and throw. And it's, it's, it's based on what, it's just his first interception, I think, in that game?
Yeah, it was his first interception of the year.
Yeah, yeah. It's only his second in the last two, three years, something like that. Just crazy, man. Yes, the talent is unbelievable. There's so many guys like that in college these days, you know, black quarterbacks, uh, Pennix, uh, the fellow UCLA's. Uh, Robinson, yeah, Wallace at USC, and I'm sure the guys that I'm.
Yeah, William, Williams, Williams, yeah.
Williams, 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 Wallace Williams at USC. Yes, it's tremendous, tremendous athletes out there. It's gonna be interesting to see what kinda schemes they come up to keep these guys out of NFL. I feel somebody's working on it as we speak.
Yeah, man, people think we're naysaying on that, but we ain't, man. It's, it, it is just. You know, we talked about a little bit last week about the narratives around, uh, black quarterbacks and, you know, the, you know, and it just, it's just horrible, man. It's just, you know? And so, these guys, they, you know, they don't, either they don't get a good chance, or they get a short, short cha- you know, where they don't get a lot of time. I mean, look at, look what's happening with Justin Fields in Chicago. Any objective person would know that they have very little talent around him. The scheme ain't that great, and he's a second-year quarterback, and he didn't play, I mean, you know, he didn't start the whole year as a first year. And you get, you hear people talking about giving up on him, then you would never hear that with, with a, a highly drafted white quarterback.
Right, and we would be missed, not to, I would be missing anyway, not to mention, and we talked about the NFL, and the way he's been, uh, improperly utilized. I mean, it's ridiculous, the, the scheme they're having to drop back. It's a lousy team and getting beat up like he's getting beat up. It doesn't make sense. And they're not, they're not taking advantage of his ability to run. You know, he's, he's more of a Lamar Jackson-type quarterback. I mean, he can do, make all the throws, but he's a tremendous runner also. And they're not utilizing that at all, and that's a shame. I just hope he doesn't get hurt while they wait to put some talent together. And maybe get somebody in there that knows what they're doing on the offensive side. But so, you're right, you're right. He's, uh, you would never hear that.
Yeah, you, you get beat up and, physically, and then you get beat up mentally and emotionally when you're on a bad team. Having to fight off not only the, the results of losing, but all of the consternation and all the criticism. And then it just leaves you, uh, can leave you a shell if you're not strong enough or you don't get in a better, a better, uh, on a better team, so.
That's true, that's true.
Well, man, I think we, we, another fast hour plus. Uh, I know there's always more we could get in, but I, I think we, we covered a few things, and I hope it's been, uh, um, entertaining and interesting and informative for those who, who view it and listen to it. So, and, uh, I will give another plug for my book.
Absolutely.
Um, and, uh, I wrote a book, Tell Me Again Why Those Mostly Black Players Not Hall of Fame, Is It Racial? And folks, if they wanna sample it or even purchase it, they can go to amazon.com under the, uh, Kindle e-reader. Uh, either put in the name Sheldon Curry or the title of the book, and you can sample it. So, good brother, I'm, we're gonna close the show, and we're gonna do this again very soon. We hope to be doing this on a weekly basis. So, you, you take care of yourself and keep that part of the world in, in good shape. I know you will. And so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, uh, so long until the next time.
Till then, it's that.
All right, brother. Sounds good. Take care.
You too.
Will do.